The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Weeks with your fully baked plan for how you plan to move forward?
Correct. I'm Chrissy Johnson. I own Triple J, which owns the Alibi. I've brought Emmett Reisstrafer, who owns Genesis Farms, or one of the owners, to update on their end of things where we sit. I think his explanation can provide some further clarification for you. So if I can give him a chance to explain on his end, I think that will provide more clarification.
Okay. I mean, oral testimony is one thing, but if there are no written, nothing has been done to address the issues and make them go away. Testimony is not really going to be very helpful to us today, but I'm help, I'm willing to listen to an explanation.
Okay, what did you want written? I guess I didn't realize you wanted something written.
Well, there is a cannabis ordinance issued to this property.
Correct.
And if that has not been removed, then then testimony today is not going to remove it.
Well, and that's what he's can explain.
He can explain it, but it won't remove the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning. Emmett Reisstrafer with Genesis Farms. So I'm not Triple J, but I am associated with the property owners being a tenant for a dispensary license. And essentially, what I think happened here was really just a miscommunication because we've got a couple different groups, you know, trying to accomplish something. So just to backtrack, we first obtained a conditional use permit for the site because we were close enough to residential homes, that was required. And it was a really good process. We got to know the neighbors. We got granted the conditional use permit. Then we moved forward to get licensed from the state. We are not operational as of today. The state gives us up to a year and then also has a process to get extensions. And so we have not moved forward with construction, but we did pull a building permit in December at, which I did want to pass out to the commission. Just so to help everyone understand, when we submitted the building permit and got it back, we thought that was an indication of approval for our plans to be updated as far as how we're developing the location. And so that's why I want it, just for Genesis sake, we don't want to get in the way of the bar. We want to build another building on the same location. That's what the building permit authorizes. And so, I mean, if anyone's at fault here, Genesis needs to update our CUP or go through it again or update our plans, but I don't want to get in the way of the Alibi and the property owner.
Okay, well, your ordinance was listed for that property that they are in. And so you cannot transfer it, and so you can either withdraw it. But right now, that property, and it was signed off by the property owner, is used to be solely for the medical cannabis. And that's what we pointed out in the last two weeks ago. We gave you the opportunity to pull this so you guys could get this taken care of, and it doesn't sound like that's happened.
Okay, I guess I just don't know what my options are other than it sounds like we have to just rescind our license to kind of get out of the way for the bar. But my hope was that there could be a way for both businesses to update their plans with the county, you know, if we could have time to work with staff. I realize the last two weeks was provided. I wasn't involved with that on the dispensary side. So I'm here today to ask you to give Genesis, you know, at least another 30 days to, I don't know, reapply for CUP or update our plans with the staff. You know, I think there is a way to have both businesses be on the site. We just got to do it the right way, and I apologize if it, you know, hasn't been done the right way so far.
Did other commissioners have questions? Commissioner Karski?
Did you say that you pulled a burnt, excuse me, pulled a building permit in December to construct a new facility on this site for the cannabis dispensary?
Uh, September, yes. And I do have a copy which also shows the site plans as well. That does show the existing building as well as the new building. So we could allow the bar to continue. You know, when we first started, the discussion was the bar was moving. And then they had issues. I'm not aware of that. I'm not involved in that business. Now, they don't want to move. And so we're trying to work with the property owner, the bar, and Genesis to, to conform and allow both businesses to move forward. With the building permit, that's where I naively thought this was essentially approval or that this plan was okay. So I perhaps should have came back to the commission sooner. I understand that, and I apologize.
That was a county building permit then?
Uh, yes, here it is. And I would, if I, may I pass this out?
I don't see how it makes, has any input impact on this, but I don't care if you pass it out.
So I'm here to answer questions. Like I said, if ultimately we have to rescind our license, we're, well, I'll do that out of respect for the property owner. But that's not my goal. My goal is to work with staff to update our plans. If we have to come back, you know, Genesis still has till the end of the year.
Genesis has 60 days to start business under our ordinance.
Okay. Well, the state gave us a year, and I guess I, that's the first I had heard of that, so.
It's in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, if there's anything I can do further, I'm just trying to be helpful.
Any other questions? I have a question. Is it possible for him to rescind his cannabis license today in writing during this hearing? Or it could be for the hearing? Would it be effective? I'm looking at the state's attorney and putting him totally on the spot.
Madam Chair, Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office. Wouldn't be a rescission. It would be a surrender of the license. It's questionable whether or not it's valid anyway because you weren't operational for 60 days after it was issued. But I don't know whether or not the, this board wants to take, allow them to have a continuance during the hearing today or to another date in the future to allow that to become effective because it would have to be processed by the auditor's office to be completed.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
I'm interested in hearing if there's more public.
So is there anything else that the applicant would like to say at this time? Okay, so this is a public hearing or is there anybody here in opposition to this request? What we have before us right now is an application for three additional on-off sale malt beverages and South Dakota farm licenses. Is there anybody here to speak against that? All right, that takes us back to the commission. I'd give an opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on public comment on this matter? It's all on the commissioners. Commissioner Karski?
I can weed it off. I'm certain, uncertain as to all the legalities of the conditional use permit, and that might be a subject for executive session. But at this point, it appears to me that the CUP for the cannabis dispensary required that they'd be the only operation on this property. And even by their admission that they assumed that the Alibi would be relocating and there would be no alcohol sales. So I, I do, I personally cannot move forward with issuing more liquor licenses knowing that it would conflict with the conditions of the CUP. One has to go or the other has to go in my mind. Which one do you want? Do you want the dispensary or do you want to have a bar? If you are willing to surrender the dispensary license and go back through the conditional use permit, because in my mind, you've changed all the significant reason for the condition by having the alcohol sales. So I mean, I would want that to go through the process again, apply for the license, justify the CUP, let the board decide on that one separately. So I'm not ready to move forward. I don't, I'm not ready maybe to deny. I think that this still needs a little bit more work, and that's where I'm at on this.
This is the state's attorney. Want to say something?
Madam Chair, just a matter of clarification. The conditional use permit actually was only required because of the distance and proximity of the building to residential property. The conditional use permit, as I recall, does not actually contain conditions that say anything about the use of the building beyond that. It would have been the issuance of the cannabis license itself that had those conditions and the representations by the licensed applicant at that time that said, through their business model, their security model, and their access and odor control mechanisms that they did an excellent job presenting to this board, showed that that was going to be the only occupant of that building. So it would be those conditions. So everything that you said is correct, except it's not actually in the conditional use permit. It would actually be the application for the cannabis license itself.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other commissioners, comments, questions? Well, personally, I feel like we were, we spent a lot of time on this. We have, this is the third time it's been here. The last time it was here, we were generous and gave them two weeks with instructions that would likely be wise to pull the application at this time until they had a fully vetted out plan that met with the requirements. So personally, I'm not in favor of deferring this further. I think we gave people more than a fair opportunity. We didn't create the confusion, and I'm personally in favor of denying it at this time and moving forward.
I'll just say that I share those sentiments. I don't know that deferring this is where I'm sitting. I think we just need to take a decisive action that may lead to the business owners here taking more decisive action going forward of what they're trying to do. I guess I would ask the state's attorney, just since this would be my first one, denial leads to, what's the implications of that? They have, they have to wait so many months before they could reapply, correct?
Madam Chair, getting Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office. The statute does say if the denial is based on the unsuitability of the location, the applicant can reapply after three months to a new location or otherwise would be barred for at least a period of a year to apply again to the same location.
Commissioner Karski?
Is it procedurally permissive to not take any action on the license application, to let it die for lack of a motion?
Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
I believe under the guidance of both statutory and administrative rules set down by the Department of Revenue and the legislature, we have to actually note on the application itself that we have either approved or denied, and if we have denied, what the reason for that denial is. So simply allowing a pocket veto, so to speak, to occur is, is not going to be compliant with the statutory provisions.
Okay.
Commissioner Benega?
Well, I agree with what's been said. I think there's some confusion in my mind anyhow that the two participants in this property, trying to figure out who owns what almost, have decided on a long-range plan on frankly what their future looks like. And I think we're acting on something that may not have all the information that we need. I think I agree with you that we've heard this many times, and we really don't have a clear path.
Commissioner Karski?
Today, our action is on approving or denying a liquor license. But this gets, makes the water really muddy. I mean, we got another building there that I don't know if it complies with the conditions or if we're complying with the conditions. So that's where my confusion lies. And I know we're supposed to take action on this license, but at this point, it seems like there's just other moving parts that one domino falls. How does that impact the other ones? And that's where I'm.
But I'm not sure that the building, building permit impacts the cannabis license that we issued to this property. And I think that's the basis for the determination. My, that's the basis for my desire to deny the application for the liquor licenses right now because they're incompatible. So the fact that there's another building that got approved really has nothing to do with the cannabis licenses existing in my mind. I will call you forward if there's any need for additional testimony. Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
So my question is, we can deny for certain reasons suitability or the ownership. I mean, can we deny based on compatibility of the use of the property?
Madam Chair, getting Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office. The courts have been very clear that the issuing board, either the municipality or other governmental entity, including the county in this case, has broad discretion to determine what is a suitable or non-suitable location. I think the applicant has not demonstrated any unsuitability. Their, their past experience with their prior alcohol licenses have been without noteworthy violations. So I think it's, the issue this morning is primarily one of suitability of location. And that could include the incompatibility of existing and future uses on that property.
I apologize for putting you on the spot so much this morning, Eric, but.
Very confusing issue.
Yeah.
Anybody else that'd like to comment or make a motion?
Well, Madam Chair, I just, I just think that's what we're getting at is if we've taken three bites of this apple to find if there's suitability of this location, and if anything, at best, we're uncertain. And I'm also sensing that we might affirmatively be thinking these are affirmatively incompatible uses. So for that unsuitability, I'd make a motion to deny today.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, I think it's probably, I think we need a roll call vote then.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
No.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Thank you. That takes us to item 11, which is to authorize the sheriff's office to sign the 2023 Detention Services Intergovernmental Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice. Warden, good morning.
Good morning. Mike Madison, Warden of the Minnehaw County Jail. Today, I'm requesting authorization for the sheriff's office to sign the 2023 Detention Services Intergovernmental Agency Agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice and U.S. Marshals. It's a 36-month contract and reflects an increase in the per diem bed rate from $97 to $112 per day. The contract's been reviewed by the sheriff's office as well as state's attorney's office. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions for the warden?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Karski.
Warden, I was looking over the contract and it, let's see. The first item after your memo was just kind of a cover page, if you will, that says the estimated number of federal beds, one male, one female. Is that just some kind of placeholder or are they, are they only allotted one bed? What, can you just help explain that?
Sure. Yes, it is a placeholder. Historically, we've been over one. We're not guaranteeing them beds above that. We obviously like to be a good partner. We will take U.S. Marshals when they need us to. We've been trying to stay around 15. In years past, we've been as high as 34, 45. It depends on what our Minnehaw County jail population is and our commitment to Lincoln County to house their prisoners.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions?
Who would make a motion to approve? Second?
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 12, which is the County Safety Committee Annual Briefing. Doug, I saw you somewhere. There you are. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Doug Blumker with the Office of Emergency Management. And this morning, I'm talking, or speaking on behalf of the Safety Committee. So we're required each year to give you an annual report of our, of our activities and what we've been up to. And so I know a memo's been sent to you, but just to hit a few highlights as far as what's been in there. We meet each month, first Thursday of each month. And at that meeting, we discuss any concerns that we might have, for example, of workman's comp type claims or any liability claims that have come into the county at that point to see if there's anything preventable that as a county or as a group that we can help make recommendations to prevent those types of things happening there too. And then also any other type of concerns that might concern any type of safety issues that will affect any county employees or any of our properties. We have seven members of our committee, myself, Tyler Gronk for the facilities, Michael Baker with Information Technology, Mark Conderman with Highway, Mike McGovern with the Sheriff's Office, Melinda Story with the Commission Office, and Maggie Gary with Human Resources. We're a very active group. As you can see, we have a broad level of experience across the board. So we can all talk to different areas of expertise. So various types of things that can come in that we can address and work with each other. We are required by the South Dakota Municipal League and Safety Benefits to have several trainings throughout the year to kind of maintain our safety levels. And those include defensive driving, back injuries, prevention, and slip strips and falls. And usually, we try and slip one or two other types of trainings in that we might find interesting to our, the employees in the, in the county. For example, we've done first aid, we've done CPR, AED, and top of the league, just to name a couple of them that we've done as well. We do routine inspections across the board of all of our facilities, just making sure that all the buildings are in safe condition. There's no hazards that our employees might run across, for example, trips, anything that might cause injury, something in, for example, a shelf that's too high might fall, injure somebody, just to make sure that those things aren't going on. And then we have a form that we fill out that's provided to us by the South Dakota Municipal League. And we go through that with the various department heads, talk with them about anything that we might have seen and just ask them basically to make those changes to make sure that everything is safe in those various departments. One activity that we did last year is we were asked to do a review of our AEDs in our various facilities. We worked with Al Penning with that. And as a result of that, we used ARPA funds to provide and purchase 12 new AEDs. Those are now distributed throughout the county campus for various departments to use in various buildings. The old ones that we had, they still have some life left in them. They're still probably very viable for the next three or four years. And so we put those into a highway, and now each of the highway vehicles carries an AED in them so that they can be in various locations of the county in case they have an issue with that as well. This last year, by meeting a number of the different things that we're required to do as far as our trainings, completing various requirements that we're required to do by Safety Benefits in the South Dakota Municipal League, I'm very pleased to say that we moved from goal level back to platinum level. That's always been a goal of mine to try and make sure that happens each year. And that's just by work of just the whole committee. It's, it's a good group of people, and everybody's very diligent with that. And I'm just very pleased to say also that we've received at least the goal level for the last 12 years. So I'm very proud of that. We also attended a Safety Benefits Committee, uh, conference. That's required each year that at least one member of our committee goes. Myself, Liz Story, and Mark Conderman attended that in peer, and very good training. And then finally, by meeting all these requirements, we are pleased to say that we get a loss control credit for our compensation, for our premiums. And that was a 9% this last year. So it was just almost $48,000 that we received back as far as just meeting those requirements for our safety, for our various departments and stuff too. So a good group, and we work very hard and very diligently at that. So I'll take any questions the committee might, or the wish might have.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Karski?
My other full-time job is insurance. Yeah. The industry puts a lot of emphasis on what you do, safety committees and involvement. And this management, i.e. the commission and department heads, this is more than lip service. This is actually doing the work and appreciate what you do and all the members of your committee because it, it shows that we are concerned. And our numbers when it comes to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and the fact that we do get the awards, we've, we're concerned about the health and safety of all the employees of the Minnehaw County. And just a thank you for doing this. It's one of those committees that might just kind of avoid notice, but it really shouldn't be, you know, because of what you do. So thank you.
On behalf of all the members of the committee, thank you. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time to be with us and for the time you take all year long on these, this effort. So, all right, thank you. That takes us to item 12, which is the annual briefing from equalization. It's equalization's favorite time of the year, so we appreciate you being here.
Good morning, commissioners. Chris Lilla, Equalization Director. Yeah, it's our busy time of year right now, so as everyone is well aware. So our annual briefing, it's pretty much the same PowerPoint. And as I noticed, you'll see 2021 County Commission presentations, so I apologize. I don't know how many times we proofed this and did not update that, but it's, the oath hasn't changed. So one of the things I'd point out is this is our Assessor oath that we, we are charged with to assess all properties fairly and equally. And I will stand before you and attest that my staff takes this to heart. I have got a very committed staff who is very diligent and respectful to taxpayers, and we want our information to be correct and true and accurate. So moving on just to the next part. Some of the duties that we do is we maintain and update all the county data, assess real estate for property taxation, track and record all sales data, establish the growth, so all new construction, all permit value, we track all of that. TIP increment values, we monitor and build and track all of those TIP increments as those are created by the entities. We administer all the exemption programs primarily to some degree or another. Some of them, we work hand in hand with other departments, but mostly they fall to ours. Planning and development, future projects and reappraisal is another area that we do. So some of the things, some of the highlights is that we maintain and update all county data. Obviously, our parcels are growing. We added over 1,700 new parcels this year alone. So that's all new plating, all new lots. It's a lot of work. Our parcel count is now over 76,200 active parcels. Each property, we maintain a detailed record of the legal description, the ownership, any improvement, dates of improvement, construction, effective ages, qualities, conditions, size, attributes of all those improvements. So we track that with, through identification numbers and map ID numbers. We maintain the current property valuations as well as the history of those valuations, all sales associated with those legal descriptions and transfers, any improvements. We maintain all the sketching of those properties. We also administer, again, all the owner occupied is handled through our office. We deal with the elderly freeze. Most of our properties have photos. Unfortunately, as we go onto Beacon, and I'll touch on Beacon a little bit, a lot of our photos are outdated. So please don't beat us up. As we get to these properties on reviews, we will be updating photos. Every time we go to one, we'll be taking a new photo, and that will be date stamped and updated. But right now, there's a lot of photos that are sitting out there that are quite old. Also, every record and every time we perform an inspection on a property or visit that property, we have inspection notes for what we've discovered or changed or edited. Sales is a big one. Total number of transfers is down a little bit for 2022. 2021, we were just over 9,000 transfers. This year, we're at 8,400, although we are a slight decline. If you look at the bar graphs, you'll see the value of those sales has continued to climb. That's the trend we're in, and that's why you're seeing your assessments now with increases is because those sales are selling for more money than previously. Next slide. Real estate assessment markets. Again, each property has a specific valuation to it in relation to its property characteristics and/or the land size and productivity. We annually evaluate all of those values and compare those in modeling to the current trends of the market. First, for our 2023 assessments, our starting level countywide, we were at 75.3%. State losses, I need to be between 85 and 100 when I'm done. My target level is between 90 to 94. So this year, just for the assessment notices, that required an average increase of 14.7 countywide. If you recall, last year was 18.8. So we're down a little bit. Some of the big increases that we took last year helped alleviate the added increase that was needed this year as well as a little bit of softening toward the tail end of the market. But all in all, it was almost a repeat of last year. So. But all in all, it was almost a repeat of last year. So.
Before you get off this slide, I'm going to ask a question. So I don't, I'm sorry. I just was trying to make sure I got you before you moved on. I, I'm curious if, because I had an opportunity to call you last week because after valuations went out, my neighbors were a little exercised and contacted me. And so you were gracious to take my call right away. And I was wondering if you could take us through the previous slide and this slide and help somebody to understand how that might apply to an actual property.
Okay, so, so on this, this one here with my levels of assessment.
Well, I mean, the last, the last slide where you talked about how prices have been going up significantly. I think the problem is, is it's easy to see things in the abstract and not necessarily understand how that might apply to me.
Sure.
So it does matter. For example, I can give you an example of my house. I didn't sell my house. I have no interest in selling my house. My kids are going to move me out of my house to the nursing home, I hope. But, um, but because there were sales in my neighborhood, which were in my mind shocking, that, that affected the appraised, the value that your department gave my house.
Correct.
And then that plus the next slide where you talk about how you're trying to get to a certain level.
Sure.
Over the last two years has affected the value of my house. And so I just want people to understand that, you know, it's easy to kind of skim off into la la land as you're going through all these numbers. I mean, this has real impact to people. And it's not, and it's, and it is not because we're trying to screw more taxes out of them. It's because this is what is going on in our market. So.
Great point. So first off, when we send out our assessment values, our office is not telling you the value of, I mean, we are indicating to you what the value of your property should sell for on a competitive, open arms-length transaction in today's market. We don't decide that. Buyers and sellers decide that. Our system of taxation and valuation is ad velorem or Latin for according to value. Meaning, you live in your house, you have not sold your house, you've lived in it for 20 years, but all of your neighbors around you have decided it's time to move on to another property. They've offered their house for sale on the open market. They're a willing seller. Someone has stepped forward as a willing buyer and said, I will pay you that much for the house. If that value that is being transferred exceeds the previous assessed value, there is a ratio assigned to that. And every transfer that occurs in the county gets a ratio assigned to it. Like I said, we had over 8,400 transfers. We screen those out and we audit those. We are only looking at arms-length transfers, meaning they have to be open market advertised, no relation between buyer and seller. There has to be consideration or money exchanged. If, if any of those criteria are not met, those sales are rejected. We only want the arms-length transactions. That gets us down to roughly 4,000 transfers this year that are arms-length. So that's where I start out and I look at the countywide. Again, every sale, if, if we, if we thought it was worth 100,000 and it sold for 200,000, I'm at a 50% ratio. I'm low. And the next one, and the next one, and the next one. We look at all of those sales and every one of those, we work off of the median of that. So countywide, my starting level of assessment was 75.3. State law says I have to be between 85 and 100. So once I have all of those 4,000 transfers ratioed and, and found the median of those ratios, then we extract those back out to the individual localities or neighborhoods. So now we take those 4,000 transfers and we move them back like in Jean's neighborhood. I'll use yours as an example since you brought it up. Her neighborhood is very small. We've got 67 parcels in her neighborhood. Her value is compared against 67 other properties. Of those 67, this past year, we had four sales. Normally I'd like to have five, I'd like to have more, but four represents a pretty good percentage of that. When I started out in her neighborhood, my ratio was at 64%. I'm at 64, last year's assessment represented 64% of what they're selling for. Obviously, I need an increase. So I take that neighborhood, we go through it, and I didn't get as high as I normally would like to do. It was a substantial increase. My statistics were good. My bullseye was very tight. My dispersion was very close. I didn't have a high quantity of sales, but I had a good representation of percentage of properties to sales. So that warranted a, basically a 29 to 30% increase in that. That raised my level of assessment in her neighborhood from 64 to 83. I still did not get even into the 85. But I have to do that on every single neighborhood throughout the county. The more neighborhoods I get in above that 85 range, when I pull them all back now at the end, I started out, every sale had last year's assessment, what it sold for in a ratio. Now I've modeled those. I've made those increases or decreases or no changes to those. And I put the new value back in. And I now compute a new ratio from what would be their assessment value to their sale price. In some cases, maybe I was at 80% and now I'm at 90. The next one, maybe I was at 70 and now I'm at 84. The next one, I might be, might have been at 95 and now I'm 110 because I can't pick and choose those. I have to do everything uniformly. At the end of that, then I take all of those sales, compute the new level of assessment, and that's where I ended this year at 90%. So I have made my adjustments. So some areas get 6%, some areas get no change, some areas, if they're hot selling area. And again, buyers and sellers determine that. I don't. All I'm doing is recording the actions of the, of the, of those transactions to determine, that tells me what level of increase or decrease and no change is required. So again, started out at 75.3%. Countywide, our ending with our assessment notices, we're at 90. We're right in the middle of where I want to be. Last year, I started out at 74% and we ended at 90. So we are there. I know it's a big bite to swallow when some people look at their assessments. But that is what our office is charged with based on sales in your neighborhood. And also within those neighborhoods, we break those down into older, mid-age, and newer. So again, in, in a smaller subgroup neighborhood of maybe 400 properties, there's 200 older homes and 150 mid-age and 100 newer homes. The older home sales are not driving values to the new and vice versa. Each one is analyzed. We strip it down that far. So anyway, 90% is where we ended this year on our assessments. There was a lot of variables in the increased percentages. Some were huge, some were not as significant, but that is what we're charged to do. So our office is also charged to value properties on three approaches, the cost, market, and income. Obviously, everything that has an improvement, we begin with the cost. We use, we use our CAMA system or computer assisted mass appraisal that has Marshall and Swift cost valuation services, those cost tables built into that. We are required by state law to use either Marshall and Swift or Vanguard in South Dakota. Minnehaw County uses Marshall and Swift. So every time you build a house, regardless of what it costs you, we resketch that. We put in all of those characteristics or attributes of those improvements. That computer then regenerates the cost to build. From that cost to build, then we go into the market and depreciation tables, and that's where we make our adjustments. We say, here was our cost to build. It runs through depreciation. And maybe it takes 10% off for the age and wear and tear on a home. Then we compare that, that value to what they sell for, and that's where we make our adjustment. Do we need to move this up? Do we need to move it down? We're really calibrating depreciation to what the market recognizes as depreciation. So that, that jumps us in. We've got the cost and there's the sales. If it is an income-producing property, apartments, things like that, we can go into the income approach. And we do a lot of our apartments via income approach. It's just another way to take annualized income and capitalize it to produce value. So again, we track development growth on the next slide, building permits. We're over 7,000 building permits annually throughout the county. And you can see we've been hanging pretty, pretty steady. If you want to go to the next slide, we've been hanging pretty steady at the level of building permits. But again, if you look at the value, whoever's running the slide could go to the next one. You'll see the, on the right graph, the, the increase in that building permit value. So again, values are growing. Some of that is inflation, building material costs, things like that. Some of it is just the scale of economy and what we're building. We're building bigger and better and nicer and fancier all the time. Anytime you add something into your home that costs you more, it's probably going to add more value. So if I have stock cabinetry and for my countertops, if I want to go to custom cabinetry and granite countertops, that's a, that's a bigger cost to me as a homeowner to do. It's probably also going to be reflective in your value through our grading of your home. That is something that adds value above and beyond. So next slide, again, we, we administer all the exemptions and benefit programs. Owner occupied, elderly freeze, we work with the treasurer's office. And I would really like to point out for anybody that's listening, elderly freeze had a massive change for this year. Last year, the limitation on the property valuations was about 208,000 to qualify. The state has moved that to 317,700 valuation this year. So anybody that's living on a fixed income that's above the age of 65, if their current assessment is 317,700 or less, please contact the treasurer's office and, and make application. The treasurer's office will verify the income. And if that meets, then it comes over to my office to verify that their value does not exceed. And if they don't, we will, we will apply elderly freeze to them and basically freeze their value at what the value was in the year they turned 65. So I expect we're, we're going to have a big explosion with that limitation of value increasing. So we also handle all the discretionary formula, disabled vets, renewable energy credits, all the exemptions for religious, charitable, benevolent, all the agricultural exemptions, paraplegics. Our office handles all of those. So. Some of the accomplishments we did this year, we started our reappraisal, our actual physical reappraisal that hadn't been conducted in 20-plus years in Minnehaw County. We got out, we wanted to start two years ago, but with COVID, we ended up not going door to door like we intended. So we did an in-house grade desktop review of our information to help clean up our data. This last summer, we actually started, we got a couple of townships done. We got a small town done. We got several neighborhoods done in Sioux Falls. That will be now continuing perpetually. Every year, we will go back to, like on this year's study, where is the neighborhoods that my statistics are, my bullseye is pretty big and broad. That's where we have inconsistent data. That's where my appraisers will target, will work from the worst to the best. And once we get through everything, the cycle will start over. And, but we will be coming around to everybody's homes and businesses. Probably once every seven to eight years, we'll be knocking on the door to review and to make sure all the data that they're being valued against is still accurate and credible. Again, we model and, and track all of the sales and we continually analyze that throughout the year. One of the big things I'd really like to thank the commission for is the approval of Beacon. That is coming. We should be going live tomorrow with Beacon. I don't know if it's all, all the information is going to be right. I previewed it. The values are there. The tax history is there. The sales are there. The, the sketches are there. The photos are there. All the attributes are there. What was missing as of yesterday is a couple of the map layers that I'd like to have them on. They're working diligently to try and get that done. But we're going to push forward with a live, no matter what. The map layers I'm referring to is just on the map, where are all the sales? So somebody can go click and see when, highlight where a property was that sold and when it sold and what it sold for. That might lag a little bit, but we do have that available currently on our minimap, on our public minimap. We're trying to get that mirrored over on the Beacon, but we should be going live tomorrow. Goals and for this upcoming year, again, reappraisal is always going to be a goal. I highlighted in, in big letters there, we will be starting with the neighborhoods that have the worst statistics, the ones that are really a raid, the cats have strayed out of the pen, if you will. We need to collect them all back and get everything back and make sure the data is consistent and cohesive and accurate. Building permit, who knows what the future holds. If our growth continues to go, that's always a stress to our staff. There is a lot of properties, a lot of houses to go measure, record, annotate all of the details of every one of those, put those into the system, generate those values. There's just a lot, a lot of work that goes with that. And also Beacon, Beacon being a new product to Minnehaw County. It's been well-used all over the country and a lot of different counties in the state of South Dakota. But a little bit of a learning curve, not too bad. Anybody that wants to go onto Beacon tomorrow, there is a, a video link built within Beacon that you can click on and watch how to use and process and go through Beacon. But I think that is going to be a huge attribute for us. It's going to reduce some of our phone calls and our foot traffic. Right now, we're, we're sending out, I don't know, 500 plus property cards every month that people come in or email us and request because on our current information system, they're not getting everything that they need. So Beacon will, will hopefully stave some of that off and relieve some of our pressure. So. Any other questions? Is me?
Questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Boyenberg.
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering, Chris, you mentioned that the state had changed the elderly value for properties, which is great. Have they updated the income threshold?
Yes, they did. I'm not sure, Chris Swanson, that did go up. I know it's, it's like 40, for a couple, it's 47,000.
Yeah, it went up, it's like 10,000 for each, a single unit or a single dwelling was, went up 10,000 and multiple dwelling went up also 10,000, so 47,000, 37,000.
It's still pretty low in my opinion. I wish that would come up. I mean, I, I, that's some of our complaints when, as I've talked to people now with assessments and taxpayers that they're older, they're, they're living on fixed incomes. And, and I've literally been yelled that, can you live on $47,000 a year? Or less? And unfortunately, I don't make those laws. I wish I had the, the want to, to swipe that and move that because I certainly could not. The last conversation I had, a guy asked me why not? I said, because I have kids. And he goes, I have kids too. I said, my kids are living at home. They're dependents yet. But yeah, that's, that is a shortcoming yet. I, I think there's still a problem. I think they've addressed it some, but to have one formula for the whole state, I still don't think works. Still don't think it works. I think there needs to be locational adjustments for cost of living and, and house values. But I'm, I'm grateful to the state increasing drastically the, the valuation limit because we were having issues. You can, you couldn't go out and buy a 1948 hundred square foot house for 208,000 in Sioux Falls. It just, it was broken. So good step in the right direction. Hopefully that moves forward, maybe a little bit farther, but.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Commissioner Karski?
Chris, this came to my mind, and I apologize for not maybe bringing this up earlier, but Beacon is really beneficial to maybe commercial users, banks, real estate, insurance, et cetera. But I, as a taxpayer, just want the information on my house and I want it once. Is there a way for me to access that?
Yes. So right now, any, anybody out there in the county can go get reduced information on Beacon for free on any property, once we go live. So as a taxpayer, you could go in there and put in an address, put in an owner name, put in a parcel number. It will bring you into Beacon to that parcel and it will show you the legal description, whether that property is owner occupied or not, who owns it. You wouldn't get any of the attributes of the house, like how much basement finished, how many bathrooms. You wouldn't get a sketch. You wouldn't get a photo. You wouldn't get the sales history on that. But what you would get is the values and the, the value history and the tax history. That is free. If you want to pay $2 to access per record, you can go back in there. Then it opens it all up. Then you will get all of the sales history on that. You will get our, our sketch. You will get our photos. You will get all of the information on the house or the building, how many, how much basement finished, how many bathrooms, how many bedrooms, that all, that, that.
2020, we could slide back to that slide that had our 2023 assessments. This market adjustment of 14.7, is it fair to say that that's the average increase across?
That's the countywide average.
Countywide average.
So that's residential, commercial, everything.
And so as a rough rule of thumb, if I'm receiving a notice in the mail and I'm at that 14 to 15%, I'm average. And my taxes will probably be somewhere, all other things being equal.
Yeah, if, if the budgets didn't change.
Yes.
And everybody went up the same, then your taxes would, would theoretically.
So as, as a rough rule of thumb though, for somebody just trying to understand that this is just the assessed value, which is just one element, one variable in an equation. This is, does not mean that your taxes will go up by 14.7%. Your value is then multiplied by a levy rate, which is kind of reverse engineered to fill the county budget and.
School budget.
School budget, all these other taxing authorities. But if you have an assessed, if you received an assessed value that's over 14.7, all other things being equal, you're probably prepared for a, a tax increase.
Correct.
And it's important to note that if you're under that, it's possible that you could have a tax decrease year over year. And then just, just to get a, a sense, I thought I recall was last year, this market adjustment was about 18%. So are you, is it fair to say, I mean, are you seeing some cooling off in the market? Or 18 to 14, maybe not a, a big statistically significant change?
Yeah, it, it's cooled off a little bit toward the tail end. There was still, of those 8,000, all of the 4,000 transfers, I mean, I had 42. parcels that transferred twice in the same year. About half of those forty-two were, were true flips, where we had building permits taken out, where they'd purchased the home from somebody and then done some remodeling and then sold it for a profit or excess. About half of those, though, I had no permits, now that's not to say they didn't do some work, but about half of them, if they sold earlier in the year, in January or February for a hundred and forty thousand, then I turn around and in May or June, I've got another sale of that property for two hundred and forty thousand. And I have nothing that says any work was done on that property, now that's not to say they didn't paint or things like that, but the, the trending was still going up. Now, toward the tail end of the year, I think it started tapering off, but I have to analyze all sales that occurred from November first of twenty twenty-one through October thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. So the cooling off, I think, came right at the tail end, it didn't change the median for me much. Um, it certainly didn't change the average that much either. I think if there is a cooling off period, and I was very hopeful last year that we were at the, at kind of the peak, but it wasn't, it just kept running away. Um, at least in the beginning and mid-part of the year, we'll see what next year brings.
Thank you.
And if, i- i- if the, if the, a neighborhood starts selling for less than the assessment, that's a question we get often too. Yes, I will track those down, instead of increasing values, I will decrease values. Again, it depends on what that market tells me.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, great presentation, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That takes us to the next presentation, which is from our treasurer, Chris Swanson. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chris Swanson, County Treasurer. Well, first of all, I wanna thank you for all the support you've given me over this last year. It's been a learning process for me, and so, and it's been going well, and I, I just appreciate your support. Also, thank you for coming and viewing my office here a couple weeks ago. I was excited that you came down so you could see what we have done down there. Uh, we moved, you could see our assistant treasurer, well, my office is gone, as you could see down there, I moved into the, call it the mailroom, but then we've taken our assistant treasurer and one of our accountants and put them back in the corner in the north end, built a wall there, and so it's more private now, so the money, I feel like it's more secure out of the sight of, you know, people at the window, 'cause you could see it before, always counting money in the back, now you don't see that as much, it's always way in the back now. We did put a, uh, got a camera back there finally, and I'm, what I need now is a, um, a card reader to put on that north door, so people don't keep walking through my office, I don't know if you guys saw that at all, but um, David, to get back there, you've gotta go through my office, which I don't mind, but sometimes it can get kind of crazy, so I'm, I'm, talked to Mark about getting a card reader put there. So we did paint and added some new office space and furniture, which created more room, looks much less congestive, you've had customers that come back there, especially for the elderly tax freeze, and they're like, this looks wonderful, it's so clean. So that makes me feel good. What we are like, we're hoping to do, um, is that break room, I would like to paint that. Those floors need to be stripped really bad and redone. And we're also asking possibly for some new tables eventually here, 'cause they're getting kind of wore out. The filing cabinets are old, but they're still functionable, um, we could probably use a few eventually here, um, maybe even cover up the front to cover up some of the clutter that it looks back there, but a lot of the stuff that we had back there, we did box up, we labeled it well, and it's over in the old jail, um, locked up there, so then we have to go over and get some documents, we're just able to go over there in a secured area and get what we need over there. So we did add one full-time, uh, tax and license technician, and we've just hired, well, she's been there for a while now, but our third part-time, so we finally got our part-timers there, they're doing very well. We've got two of them that work twelve hours and one that works sixteen. And so, this covers the busiest time of our day, which is from usually right around ten-thirty to three. Yesterday was all day, but, uh, for the most part, our lunch hours are when it gets really busy. So we're excited about that. We're covering, I don't know if you recall, last year, we had quite a few NSF checks, I can't remember the exact amount, but we're down to eight. And so I think that is pretty significant. And what we do is, five of those checks currently are with the tri- or with the, um, sheriff's office, we give them ten days in our office to pay those, if they don't get paid, they go to the sheriff's office, and the sheriff has to serve them. And then, um, if they're still not taken care of, we, they get sent to state. And the state now is, bless their hearts, is putting a hold on their South Dakota cars. So they can't do a transaction if they wanted to, because now they've got a financial obligation. So that's been working very well. So, um, we're, I, I guess I'm gonna see, we'll probably see a little bit more of an uptick now with property tax season coming in. But at least with the property tax, you, you can gain that back, whereas with a, you send out a renewal with an NSF check, they've already got the renewal in their hand, you know, and so, um, we can't get that back very easily. Um, we're working on, um, we just sent out the, uh, courtesy notices for our two thousand eighteen delinquent property taxes. So these notices inform the owners that the county's in the process of taking tax deed on their property. So we begin the process of taking tax deeds on properties that are four years old by having title searches done on the parcels, which are very time-consuming, um, 'cause some of them have quite a few liens on them. Um, you have to find family members, it's, it's a very time-consuming process. We then send a letter of intent to take that deed to the property, um, owners, creditors, and all interested parties. And then we move forward with taking the tax deed if we haven't received payment on the taxes. And after, all documents are reviewed by the state's attorney's office. And the taxed properties are then offered for sale by public auction after commission approval. So we've got, like I said, we've got the eighteen's letters out, um, we've had a few come in, pay. They acted like, you know, they were concerned that they wanted to get that taken care of, so obviously we let them. Um, we do have a few seventeen's we're working on yet, but we, we do plan on having, um, a sale this summer. And we would actually like to try to get two sales in, I don't know if that's possible, but we're gonna work on that, so. Uh, our phones, um, if you notice, um, we have, our phones are being covered now by four people, full-time. We have about, on average, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty phone calls a day. And so, and we, we, I've been logging, having them logged to see how many we're actually dropping, or how many are dropped, we get missed. Five and under. So, and sometimes you've even had less than, I mean, like, one, and that's pretty exciting for me, so. But we're getting those calls answered, which has been something I've wanted to do for a while. I'm still thinking about wanting to add another window. Right now, with our part-timers, we're covering pretty well. Now, I did notice, we, we've been able to maintain our lines, which I'm, I'm very excited about. Now, yesterday, due to snow, the snow days, and I don't think people were aware that we were open on Monday. We have had, we, yesterday, I actually had to cut the line off, which I would, did not want to do, but we would have been here till eight o'clock last night, that's how many people we had, and we've got that line again today, but it is the last of the month. And so, um, but for the most part, we've covered those windows very well. And I'm, I'm pleased with that, so I hope you guys are too, 'cause that was one of the biggest complaints, and we do ask people when they've had to wait a while, it's like, how long have you had to wait? And they say, oh, fifteen, twenty minutes, not a big deal, we're okay with that. So, so well, we're, our aim is to get you through as fast as we can, so. Another thing I was, what we've done is, um, we've continued to have our signage at the main west entrance, um, along with a TV monitor, to read and view instructions before getting into line, that's all right when you first come in that, that door, there's a TV up there. Then we've got some, um, instructions that are written, and then we also have a larger TV that's just right on the south end of our office, on the auditor side. But it still does amaze me how many people still come in unprepared, that don't have all the paperwork they need. So I'm trying to, you know, rattle my brain on how I can still educate people to get the stuff that they need, so they don't have to stand in line and then be turned away because of it. So, but, I mean, we're, we're covering what we need to cover, it's just I don't know how to get people to read it. Then, um, I'm going back to that line again, I am sorry, jumping around, but adding another window, I've gotta come up with a decision as to whether or not I wanna put that in a budget. I don't know i- if we're there yet, we're getting close, I, I mean, you can feel the growth. I do think it'd be ni- nice to have another handicapped window. But I just, I, I'm not sure how to go about this yet, um, and I will address that later, but that is something I'm really wanting to consider possibly putting in another window, but I don't want that window to sit empty, you know, when, um, when it's the busiest time of the day, you know, so that, that's, that's a concern of mine. I would like to see another desk area on our north wall, um, since we have another tax and license tech that we, I was able to pull one back, who works on dealerships, he works on our PMB. He also has started doing education on our new hires, which is something I've really wanted to do. So what we, we're doing there is having, his name is Tanner, when we get a new hire, he brings that new hire back to his desk. They go through titles, they go through property taxes, they go through whatever kind of education and questions that they would have before I put them up to the window, and then that person goes up to the window, and they watch for a while, and then we slowly let them start on their own with supervision. And then if they've got more questions or they're not getting it, they go back to Tanner, Tanner helps them out a little bit longer, so. Anyway, that's been helping a lot too, and I've even had them say, hey, this has been really nice, thank you, we, uh, we're getting our question, questions answered, and, um, um, so, that's been good. Elderly tax freeze, Chris had mentioned that before, I have just recently logged, um, two hundred and fifty applicants in, and this is the end of February. March gets really busy with that, so I'm guessing we're gonna get at least another hundred and fifty to two hundred coming in, in, um, March. And yes, the, the finance, uh, Jen, you had asked about the, uh, income levels, yes, they have gone up about ten thousand. I do think that that needs to go up higher also. But we do have people coming in that live on a very, very low fixed income, and it, it's concerning. Let's see, uh, one more thing I wanted to cover too, is, uh, we talked about phone calls, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty a day, but we are averaging right around six thousand titles a month. Lot of out-of-state, lot of new people coming into our state, and so a lot of title transfers. That is it in a nutshell, I guess.
Questions for the treasurer? Commissioner Benega?
I just have to make one comment, um, I went a whole year without getting a negative phone call about the answering the phones at the, your office, so congratulations, 'cause I used to get those on an hourly basis.
Good, I'm glad to hear that.
Anyone else? Commissioner Karski?
Appreciate also what you're doing down there, Chris, some great, um, management. One suggestion, and this comes to mind because the South Dakota Department of Motor Vehicles did it with driver's licenses. Instead of an additional window, would it have any merit to maybe have, if people wanna call ahead for an appointment? That way they know, if, you know, like, if I come at, if I have an appointment at ten o'clock, I'll come right in, kind of go to the front of the line type of thing?
And then just have a s- one window with that, you mean?
A window or a separate desk where you don't have to add a window, but.
Yeah, that might, that, that is something I can think about, I like that. Um, I do know, in, especially when the lines are long, and I've had people, if somebody cuts in line, that's a big no-no.
That's an ugly thing, yeah.
Yeah, we don't do that, so, but I will take that into consideration, I like that.
Other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate you taking the time to be with us today. That takes us to item fifteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign the twenty twenty-three agreement for Quality Assurance Director for Rural Ambulance Services, Tyler, good morning.
Good morning, Tyler, Commission Office. Uh, the contract or the agreement for you today to consider is with Dr. Jeff Luther, who serves currently as the Quality Assurance Director, he's done so for a number of years in the past. This contract does increase by three thousand dollars, up to thirty-three thousand, which is paid monthly over the next twelve months. Again, the action for you to do is to consider signing this agreement, if you have any questions, I can try to answer those.
Questions for Tyler? Tyler, could you just comment about the last time that we gave an increase, um, on this contract?
Absolutely. So this, uh, since two thousand, in, in two thousand and twelve, this was twenty-eight thousand dollars. Then into the twenty thirteen year was up to thirty thousand, then from twenty thirteen until now, it's been at thirty thousand, so this would be the first increase in about ten years.
It's time.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Feinberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you, so that takes us to item sixteen, legislative update.
So this update takes you through the twenty-third of February. Something that I've added to this update is, there's been a number of bills that dealt with the election uh, process, just kind of in general, whether it's school district related or county related or not. So I've included all of those that the LRC tagged with election. As you can see, there's about half of them that have failed for either a forty-first day motion or a do-pass failed motion. One has passed, and the rest are pending. The document after this, I believe, kind of gives some short details about each of those bills. I would add House Bill one, or House Bill eleven fifteen was sent to the forty-first day recently also, and that's not indicated on this report. Also included is the report that was added last week, which notes the significant increases that are seen from legislation for county fees and the proposed increases in, uh, what I'll call revenue for the county, along with the always included sort of summary of each bill.
Any other, any questions for Tyler? As always, it's been a very busy legislative session, we appreciate your help in keeping track of all these things. All right, if there's nothing further for Tyler, I would open it up for public comment, is there anyone here for public comment today? Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, I just, I'm supposed to remind you, sorry, that if you haven't already signed in, I, I know you know this, if you just would sign in before you leave, thank you.
Gary Meyer, a lifetime resident of South Dakota and Minnehaha County. I'm at wit's end here. Your constituents are drowning out there, trying to fight corrupt elections and corrupt pipelines. And all you do is sit up here and stare at us. There was a packed house here last night with people begging for an ordinance to give them, for some relief against this huge billion-dollar taxpayer-funded corporation. And one person here from the pipeline, and the zoning and planning did exactly what that one person wanted, nothing. I've heard numerous reports that we're all worried about the Chinese are gonna come in and buy our land. Well, here, we've got this pipeline with known foreign investors from Saudi Arabia and, uh, South Korea. They don't even have to buy our land, they just come and take it by eminent domain, and we do nothing but let them come in and run us over. Last week, you all voted to de- to delay your opinion letter to the PUC for a month while you tweaked it. For crying out loud, you already sent a letter a year ago on the Summit Pipeline, and it took you two months to tweak that one. And the me- and all in the meantime, the pipeline just continues to roll us over. And as I said, Chris Nelson told me flat out to my face that this letter carries absolute, absolutely no weight because it's your decision, or is because it's your opinion. It contains no facts, and you refuse to take action, so by law, they just put it in a pile and set it aside. And while you do that, the pipeline continues to roll us over, while you look the other way. When are people going to wake up that this is the biggest fleecing of the American taxpayer dollar by a private company stealing our land right out from under us? The county commission does nothing, the county zoning and planning does nothing. We were in peer at their legislative session, hundreds of people out there lobbying for a bill to be passed that would give the landowner some relief. It was killed in the Senate State Affairs Committee, nine to zero. The lobbyists, the pipeline company had over twenty lobbyists out there. I guess all them steak di- steak dinners and finance campaign contributions paid off. Um, I have on my notes here that I need to apologize for my ranting, I probably do. But I'm sick and tired of our elected officials that are too gutless to take a stand for what is right. This country is falling apart, and very few elected officials have what it takes to take a stand. This guy here is the last guy I know of that was willing to stand up against the swamp. And part of that swamp is our news media. They report fake news, our Election Integrity Group has had firsthand experience with this.
Thank you, is there anyone else here for public comment this morning? Morning.
Good morning, my name is Kay Burkard, I'm from Valley Springs area. I would just like to encourage you to pursue putting ordinances in place to protect those of us that live in Minnehaha County right next to the proposed hazardous CO2 pipeline route. It is frustrating for me that my family and neighbor's safety is in jeopardy so that South Dakota can sell ethanol to California at an increased price. At the very same time, California has passed a law protecting their entire state from these dangerous pipelines. This is a short quote from an AP News report that came out three days ago. Last year, the California State Legislature passed a law that says no carbon dioxide may flow through a new pipeline, Last year, the California State Legislature passed a law that says no carbon dioxide may flow through a new pipeline until the federal government finishes writing stronger safety regulations, a process that could take years. As a potential backup, the law directed California Natural Resources Agency to write its own pipeline standards for lawmakers to consider. "We do not expect to see carbon capture and storage happen at a large scale unless we are able to address that pipeline issue," said Ranger Sahora, the Deputy Executive Director for Climate Change and Research at the Air Board. State Senator Anna Calabro, who authorized the carbon, who authored, I'm sorry, who authored the carbon capture legislation, said that the state's goal would be to create a safety framework that's even more robust than what the federal government will develop. And that's the end of the quote. If the PUC grants Navigator a permit in June, there will be no current federal guidelines for CO2 pipelines in place when they build the hazardous pipeline in Minnehaha County here. The state does not provide us any regulations either. You are the only authority that can write local ordinances for our protection and you do have the authority. Please provide our safety with local ordinances here in Minnehaha County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Morning.
Well, good morning. I'm back again. Joy Hohn from Hartford. So as Tyler was speaking, you may have heard that our state lawmakers has failed to give us any protection by passing a legislation on eminent domain reform, which is once again why we are back here asking for the county's protection. Time is of the essence now because Summit, or excuse me, Navigator PUC hearings are currently scheduled for June. And Summit PUC hearings are scheduled for September. A couple of points that I'd like to highlight, um, that just happened here within the last few weeks. Lincoln County Commissioners passed unanimously on February fourteenth a formal resolution that they support landowner rights under South Dakota law. Summit, Navigator and the lawmakers should work to resolve negotiations over property and avoid the use of eminent domain. So that is uh, basically the wording of their resolution. Last Tuesday, Lincoln County and Planning Zoning unanimously passed to amend their ordinance with standards for CO2 pipelines. This ordinance is very similar to what was presented to the Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning. If you have additional concerns on carbon pipelines besides what you have sent in your letter to, um, to, for the Summit docket on the PUC, I would encourage you to write another letter to the PUC for the Summit Pipeline as well. I know it's challenging to navigate the PUC dockets. I know I've had issues with that. If you would like, I would be more than happy to show you how to navigate that docket. But your letter uh, last year was submitted regarding the Summit docket on April sixth. The next day, they turned around and sent you a response and I think if Tyler would look back on that, you should have that in an email. Part of their response was, quote, "Please keep in mind that the commission is not involved in planning or routing the project and does not have the legal authority to change or mandate a route," end quote. Once again, this is the county's jurisdiction. Please consider an ordinance with setbacks and routes and emergency response plans to help and protect the citizens and the landowners of Minnehaha County. You need to keep in mind that the revenue for the county from these pipelines will be short-lived compared to the future development in agricultural income that will be lost forever. Lincoln County has stepped up to the plate. We need Minnehaha County to step up to the plate as well. It is your responsibility to protect all your constituents in Minnehaha County. If you delay anymore, it will be too late. The pipelines will be grandfathered in and can do whatever they want, leaving your citizens with no protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? I would prefer that, why don't you give it to the commission officer? He can hand it out. You don't need to hand it out directly. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. I'm RJ Wright and I'm a farmer from the Valley Springs area and farm with a brother. And I'm here as a concerned citizen, full-time farmer. And my concerns have to deal with the CO2 hazardous pipelines. And what I brought was a copy from our farming, our farm liability insurance, just to kind of... The reason I'm here today is to try to help educate because there just seems to be an awful lot of things that uh, the average person or legislator in South Dakota still does not know or understand in relation to these pipelines. And what I brought, the copy of our farm liability is, is just a piece, one piece of the contin, of a big puzzle. But uh, that presents us a lot of issues or problems and I think the county, it's coming to the county. That's where it's going right now is to you officials in terms of what you will allow or not allow. And what we need to think about, I think as we, as we think ahead or go ahead is how this affects our county or our citizens. And so uh, that's the reason for, for the copy of our insurance because I think that's very problematic. I'm sure the pipeline companies will tell you, no, no, you don't need to worry about that. There will be no liability if there's an accident or a break on your farm ground. But the reality is, I think all of us know, if, if you've been around a while, yeah, you start to understand how insurance companies work and lawyers work. And I can assure you, if there's an issue on someone's ground with a, a leak with one of these pipelines, the landowner is gonna be brought into it and named regardless of what they will tell you. So anyway, I just thought I'd bring that today. And then the other thing I'd like to comment on, it kind of has to do with what uh, Kay Burkhardt or Kay Erickson was talking about with uh, right now there's a moratorium, or I think there should be a need for a moratorium on these projects until the uh, FMSA, which is the Hazardous Material Safety Administration, finishes their current rulemaking on CO2 pipelines. And that has to do with what happened at Satari, Mississippi. And right now that, they're trying to rewrite the rules for CO2 pipelines. And I guess my comment to that is, uh, try to take some of the emotion out of this. You have, I see this from both sides and I get upset about it, but to try and, that's why I go to this. I think uh, it would be very helpful for you to put a moratorium in the county to not allow them until we get the new rule, the new rules laid or the new thought process on what these pipelines do or don't do. So I think that's huge and that's all I got for today. But the, I guess the last comment I have is kind of what I talked about earlier. It's coming to the counties, whether you, whether you want to be engaged or not be engaged, or think it's your issue or not your issue. I think it's, it is your issue whether you realize it or not, and I'm just trying to impress that upon you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment today? Good morning.
Good morning. Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. I'm not here to speak to any agenda item, but I just have some comments. I have been to peer testifying on numerous really good election bills this winter. The outcome in peer is much the same as the outcome here. They sit and listen because it is on their agenda to do so and they have to do so. But once we get done speaking on bills where, again, we present data and facts, the bills get sent to day forty-one or to the garbage bin. As we have observed in this process out there, it has become very apparent that the outcome is being driven by pretty much one person that is calling the shots. When we watch what goes on on the Senate floor, again, we see this person in action. We wonder who is behind his efforts, but again, we have articles to support this and we're pretty sure we know who that someone is. But that brings me back to this body of commissioners and elected officials. I have been present at these commission meetings for over a year now. I, along with many others, have presented information week after week regarding what went on in the twenty twenty election. The election was stolen. We have the data, we have the facts to prove it and yet not one of you is interested. We know the twenty, the twenty twenty-two primary election was stolen. Again, we have the facts and we have the data, but never a question. We have sent you documents to read, videos to watch, and still you won't allow us time on the agenda to present our information. You are elected officials. You have many citizens in your county that have questions as it relates to what happened in these two elections and yet you will not give us the time to present our information. And why is that? I have been in the audience at the last two zoning and planning meetings. People stand up and again, give you facts and figures. They share their heartfelt testimonies of how their lives have been disrupted by the threat of these pipelines. The officials behind the desk just sit there with blank stares on their faces. As soon as the testimony is done, it's boom, right onto the next agenda item. Not one comment of we hear you, we feel your pain, we are looking into options to help you, nothing. What is going on? You have been elected by the people, you are paid with our tax dollars, you work for us, and yet you won't help us. There is a globalist agenda that's being pushed all over the United States. This agenda is being pushed out due to stolen elections. It's time people wake up before it's too late. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing, oh.
Good morning. Leah Anderson, Minnehaha County. Um, one week and I'll be the new auditor. My total different conversation here. My comment is just to thank you for last week. I was out of town and you voted to defer the fee item and I just wanted to thank you for that. So, that's all.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Any other public comment? All right, moving on. Commission, Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Karski.
This morning, Commissioner Kipli and I met with the South Dakota, I'm sorry, with the Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office for a um, board meeting. Want to congratulate Commissioner Kipli for being the new chair of that group. So um, it was a very close election, four to nothing. So Joe is our new uh, chair for our Public Defender's Office. Just quick updates, we had financials on them. They're doing well. One other quick item is there was legislation passed in the last couple of days creating the um, help me with the wording, it's a summer's task force for indigent care primarily through how it's being paid. And um, there's gonna be twelve people on this task force and Tracy Smith from our Public Defender's Office will be one of the representatives. Came from the South Dakota Commission, County Commissioners Association. We were, we rep, we nominated three people, two commissioners and Tracy Smith to be on that board. So there's nine others and there was some concern about the number of legal types that were on that board. But I think it'll be a good task force moving forward, so we'll see what happens. So that's what I got.
Just a point of clarification, you said indigent care and I think you meant indigent representation? Is that really more what it's supposed to be about?
Yeah, I think they call it indigent care on the task force, but it is about representation, legal representation. Yeah, not care, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Fine line.
Anyone else with an, a liaison report? Commissioner Benega.
I'll make this short. Um, I attended the Lions Fairgrounds Task Force and it was interesting because they had three state fairs that showed a little bit about their concerns in their own operations, which were very similar. Uh, they were represented in Rapid City, Aberdeen and Huron. Uh, they talked about their governance, their year-round events, uh, what a typical fair was, talked about where they at, where they were at financially, talked about their facilities, talked about some of their biggest challenges, which I'm kind of grinning because every one of them brought up the challenge of dirt, which is kind of, I never expected that to be the biggest challenge, but uh, moving it in and out for all the events and activities they have becomes a significant issue. And in all three locations, they couldn't uh, identify that what was good dirt and what was bad dirt. So that was uh, kind of ironic. But anyway, the next meeting was supposed to have been yesterday. I think it's been uh, moved to Friday, correct? So if you're interested, it'll be uh, on Friday from eleven-thirty to one and I can't remember where the location is. Is it here? It moves around. So anyway, you can also attend by Zoom.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Karski.
Um, one more thing. Um, I'm gonna circle back to your comment on dirt, Commissioner Benega. We're, we're out at the fairgrounds a couple of weeks ago. My wife and I took three of our grandchildren out there and um, between events and the shows going on, there's, there's a big pile of dirt off on the one end and a lot of kids playing there and my grandkids wanted to go there and I was about to walk them over there until one old cowboy said, "Wonder if they know that there's more than dirt in that pile." So, anyway, I thought it was a very interesting perspective. South Dakota Association of County Commissioners is having their spring workshop. You all have the agenda. It's March, I'm sorry, April nineteenth and twentieth. Really critical that new commissioners go to it, but I, I think as much so, um, those commercial commissioners that have been around a while could spend some time there because we are trying to get all the new ones there, but they really benefit from the knowledge and information from those that, of us that have been doing this a while. So encourage everybody's attendance. It's, we try to do it every other year. Yeah, a lot of, you know, new people and that type of thing. So you see the agenda. There's some good information, good stuff going on, so encouraging attendance.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Kipli.
I'm sure I've got a, a couple. Um, just wanna let the group know that uh, our highway department did not a great job with another snowstorm. I hope it's the last significant snowstorm. But I did just wanna make the, the group aware that we did have one employee in a, in a pickup truck get into an accident. And so highest priority, of course, is that that employee is, is safe and, and was, was okay in that accident. But uh, don't be surprised if Steve comes to us wanting another pickup truck, I guess, is the heads up on that. Um, and then Planning and Zoning met last night. We were able to, to keep it under three hours this time, so I appreciated that. But we did make some progress on uh, a short-term rental vacation home. Scott, I think has been getting a lot of feedback from citizens and uh, the Airbnb-type industry. And I think we synthesized that into a new ordinance that was recommended by the Planning Commission that will come to this body for a hearing, I think at the end of March. Uh, but again, the concept there was just to kind of update, we'd been operating off of bed and breakfast regulation and it just was really quirky and odd. Uh, but we'll get to talk about that a little bit more in depth when it comes to our agenda here in, at the end of March. So that was the main thing coming out of Planning and Zoning last night.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, so that moves us to non-action commission discussion. Any non-action commission discussion? All right, I entertain a motion to recess. Um, we will have executive session immediately following the meeting.
Move to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, we will reconvene in executive session. We'll give you, I'd like to do it quickly because there is a reception after this that a lot of us would like to attend. So if you can kind of, five minutes, make it as quick as possible, that'd be great. Thank you for coming, everyone.